Okay, I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order. On Tuesday, January, or, I'm sorry. Wrong page here. February 27, 2024. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmeyer?
Here.
Bona? Green?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Alaskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson? Seven present.
Okay, we are seven present. We have a quorum, and I want to remind everybody this meeting is recorded. A moment of silent remembrance, and we have Dolores Bianco, worked for the City Water Department and was wife of former Mayor Joseph Bianco. And the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Approval of the January 23, 2024, city council minutes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, motion to adopt, seconded.
Second.
Okay.
Counselor.
We want to amend.
We need to do an amendment, if somebody doesn't mind, because I neglected to include Counselor Brain's name. Once we got to full business, I had typed it in, copied, and brought everything down through, so I need to add his name on all of the votes.
Motion to amend as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Alaskowitz and Counselor Shade.
I didn't even catch that.
Right, any, any discussion? Hearing none, we need a vote on the vote to approve the meeting minutes as amended.
Did we vote on the amendment?
We're voting on the amendment now.
Okay, we're voting on the amendment?
On the amendment, yes.
Okay.
Yes, on the amendment, yes. Okay, so we need a vote on the on the amendment?
So, yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor, yes.
I was just kind of waiting, I'm sorry.
Any opposed? Okay, and all in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's first and second for amending?
I made the motion to amend as presented.
And Counselor Shade made the second.
So I'll use the same?
Yep.
Well, you do, the first motion was to approve, that's done, then you do the amendment, you vote on the amendment, and then you just vote as amended, you don't need another motion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I appreciate you.
All right.
I try. Had a little bit of practice.
Okay, hearing of visitors. Opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. Anybody wish to speak on the agenda items tonight? Hearing none. Let's move on. And without objection, I would like to move up council paper number 12369. Find it in my book here. Okay, communication from President Sapienza requesting time for Mr. Thomas Irwin to speak regarding the Massachusetts paint stewardship. Mr. Irwin, if you'd like to approach the microphone and speak to us about your program, please.
Very good, thank you. Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to meet to discuss paint stewardship legislation with you. My name is Tom Irwin, as you've heard, and I live at 54 Central Adams Dalton, Massachusetts. Whereas a member of the Waste Management Recycling Committee will face the same daunting waste crisis that North Adams face. Rapidly increasing hiring costs, tipping fees, and we are looking for a solution. After a careful study of the ways to address this issue, paint stewardship seemed like the perfect first step, and after confirming it was working well in Vermont, New York, and Connecticut, I became an advocate for this law. The need for paint stewardship is based on Massachusetts having a solid waste issue. This problem results from 6 million tons of waste being generated annually in Massachusetts with only 3.2 million tons of annual incineration capacity. This leaves 2.8 million tons of waste needing to be landfilled that has to be hauled out of state with a high ever-increasing cost and a very large carbon footprint. Product stewardship is an approach to begin reducing this burden that is endorsed by the Mass D E P 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan. Paint stewardship is a program where, as you may recall, unwanted paint can be returned to any participating paint retail store or transfer station whenever they're open without a disposal cost. The cost to consumers is 75 cents to a dollar per gallon of paint at time of purchase. Eighty percent of the collective latex can be reprocessed to as new condition and sold for 50% of the original cost. The oil-based paint, 100% of that could be incinerated and possibly 20% can be recycled. The benefits, you may be interested in those. First, it will serve the North Adams residents with something that they're going to value. This is quickly apparent by noting that 92% of 735 Massachusetts residents dropping off hazardous waste at household hazardous waste days signed petition requesting that their legislators become co-sponsors. This suggests that 92% of North Adams residents with paint in their basement or garages, and likely there are many, would endorse this particular law. Second, it will present no cost to municipalities, and there will be a decrease in household hazardous waste day cost, which will free significant annual RDP money for other solid waste concerns. And third, it will be a matter for future product stewardship legislation that will address additional items, including mattresses, solar panels, packaging, and others. So in consideration of the future, what we want to note is that although 28 reps and 12 senators sponsored or co-sponsored this bill, significant municipal support through resolutions is critical to compel serious consideration by the Ways and Means Committee, particularly the House Ways and Means Committee, to take this matter up, view it favorably, and send it to the floor of the legislature for a vote. Hence, I respectfully request the North Adams City Council add their valued support by passing a supportive paint stewardship resolution. Thank you for your attention, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Okay, communication filed without objection. Any discussion, questions? Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair. First, thank you for coming to provide this information. Do you have a packet or information that you could email us?
I have hard copies for everybody.
Excellent, okay, even better.
Thank you.
Thank you. And in each of these packets are general comments that elaborate further on the topic. There's a draft copy of
Your ready, yeah.
There's a draft copy of the resolution.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
And there's also a list of all the municipalities that are
Could we have one more up here, please, for our clerk? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
But should you wish an electronic copy, I'd be more than happy to send those as well. Most certainly do.
Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Blackmer.
So I don't have to do the homework? Who's sponsoring it, in the House and the Senate?
So Patricia Haddad is sponsoring Bill H. 823, which you'll see at the top of the paper there.
Yep.
And 542 is Senator Susan Moran.
Okay.
And 551 is Senator Patrick O'Connor.
O'Connor, okay, thank you.
Patrick O'Connor is Republican, Moran is Democrat. I like that point because it means it's bipartisan.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair. Just to clarify and for people at home, essentially this is similar to the way the bottle tax works, where there'd be kind of a fee that's paid when you buy paint and then you would recycle it?
The fee is actually the disposal cost. So when you pay the 75 cents, it's gone.
Okay, so you don't get it back, but it's collected at the point of sale?
Right, and there's an entity created by the paint manufacturers called Paint Care. And Paint Care is responsible for administering this program throughout the United States. They're the ones that do the hauling to the reprocessing plant, they're the ones that pay for the reprocessing. All of that's taken care of with roughly 75 cents per gallon.
Thank you.
Counselor Blackmer.
Wouldn't it be more analogous to the motor oil?
I don't know that you pay a fee for motor oil.
I get a charge on it, I noticed. Not when I buy it, but usually there's a fee involved when they change it, at least at the station. But if a store takes oil, sells oil, they're supposed to take it back.
This program is a little different than that. The way it's done is people, the retail stores volunteer. So the small retailers like it because it means increased foot traffic, because the program is designed that they don't care where you purchased it, they don't care when you purchased, they don't care what state you're from. And so it means more foot traffic because those Home Depot and Walmart are not interested in they're not against the program, but they're not interested in collecting the paint usually themselves. New York City's an exception, all three of those large stores will accept it back. So that's kind of how it's laid out.
Thank you.
And the other thing I think is good, I think you'll like to know this, is that five gallons does not cost 3.75, five times 75 cents, it costs a dollar seventy-five. They're trying to break even. The other thing I think you'll enjoy knowing is in Connecticut, where this has been in place for over 10 years, the price for a gallon of paint has risen by zero.
Counselor Fitch.
Thank you. After you get us potentially to sign off on this, and other towns as well, and cities to sign off on this, what's the next step in advocacy?
There's not much more that I can do. What I do with, I aggregate these and I send these to the Senate and House Chairs of the Ways and Means Committee. I also send them to the minority leader of the Ways and Means Committee. And I demonstrate that this is a priority to the municipalities, and at that point, it's in their hands. And should they pass this in the House, and, or in the committee, it goes to the full House for a vote. From there, it goes to the Senate for consideration or Senate Committee, and then to the full Senate for a vote, and then to the Governor's Desk. So I anticipate that at this point, and this is the very first time I've ever done anything crazy like this, so from what I've heard and what I've learned, then my job, once it's in the hands of the Senate, Ways and Means Committee is done. And so far, we have 22 resolutions from municipalities, and I expect at least 40 to 50 when I'm finished by mid-April.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Any other? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your presentation, and it was very nice, and we'll move forward from there at a future meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, any further, any last words you want to share with us, or you all?
If anyone comes across a question after this meeting, you all have my card, my phone number's on it, give me a buzz, I'll be happy to get you the answer or give the answer. So please don't hesitate, okay? Will my presence be needed at all in the future for this matter to become to a decision?
If it is, we'll let you know, but I don't think so at this point.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
I want to thank you all for your attention.
Good, thank you. Okay. All right, moving on, council paper number 12,191, communication from Counselor Shade requesting the local Department of Health review the rules and regulations to address the storage of garbage postponed from the meeting of January 23, 2024, with a return date of February 27, 2024.
I would like to move to continue this until the meeting of March 12, 2024.
Okay, motion to continue in March 12 of 2024. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Blackmer, Counselor Shade, any discussion? Counselor Blackmer.
The Public Safety Committee met, and I just have to make the edits and send them to the attorney, the solicitor, so I should be able to get that done.
Okay.
And get it back by the next meeting.
All right, so motion to postpone to the meeting, the second meeting in March? Or no, that'd be the first meeting in March, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion approved. Council Paper number 12,306, in ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Junk and Secondhand Dealers, Article 1, Sections 10-3, Record of Purchase and Sales, Inspections of Book, Shop Keeper to Display Name, Sent 10-4, Dealing With Miners Prohibited, and 10-5, Business Hours. We have, looking for a motion to adopt.
To adopt.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Blackmeyer?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Council Paper number 12,336-1, in ordinance amending Chapter 14 entitled Offenses Miscellaneous, Section 4.1, entitled Noise. We need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Shade and Fitch, okay. Any discussion? Counselor Shade.
Yes, thank you. When I introduced this, we also knew that we were going to need a joint public hearing with the planning board for a separate item. Has that been scheduled yet?
To my knowledge, it has not been scheduled. Counselor Blackmer?
It hasn't been scheduled for the March meeting of the planning board, and my suggestion would be to actually schedule it, the second meeting of March, 5:30 before our meeting, instead of their meeting, because one, we can get it done in a month, and two, we, I can't make 5:30 next Monday, so, and it's too late to do that anyway. But that way, we don't have to wait till April. That would, I can or the clerk can reach out to Plano Maxick and see if he's conducive to having it at 7:30, I'm sorry, 6:30. On the March 12th, in 14 days is, I don't know.
It's going to be for the second meeting in March.
12, 14.
I don't know, can we do that? Is that enough time to publish? Yeah.
I would think so, yeah.
It is.
Yeah. I believe that would be the 26th.
Yeah, today's the 27th, yeah.
I can reach out to the Chair.
Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair to Counselor Blackmer. I know we had sent this to the planning board, do you know what the date is that they're going to meet to discuss this is on? Is that on their agenda yet?
Usually, I haven't seen the agenda for next week yet. Usually what happens is they have the public hearing, and then they put it on the agenda after that.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what the status is that. And I was just looking, I just wanted to make sure that what we just voted on to adopt was published.
It has been published, yes.
Okay.
This is the one that has been published, the one I'm talking about?
Yeah, I realize that, I just wanted to clarify.
Planning board part of it has not been published, that would be?
That has to be published as a public hearing.
Right.
As a joint public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. All right, we had a motion and a second, and this will be a roll call vote, please.
Blackmeyer?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Okay. Motion to adopt approved. Council Paper number 12,367, communication number 24 for Mayor Maxi for the reappointment of Cody Chamberlain to serve as a member of the Youth Commission for a term to expire on February 13, 2027. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, communication filed without objection, confirmed.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion approved. Council Paper number 12,368, communication number 25 for Mayor Maxi for the reappointment of Alyssa Laney Sporbert to serve as a member of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Idea Commission for a term to expire on February 8, 2027. Communication filed without objection.
Second.
Counselor Shade, Counselor Blackmer, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Okay. Paint stewardship, okay, we have no licenses. Open forum, opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Would anybody like to come to the microphone, please? Name an address for the record.
I almost know the drill. My name is Patricia Mio, I live at 36 Holden Street, Apartment A. And I have two things I wanted to mention. First of all, I went to vote early yesterday at the city clerk's office, and I had a totally wonderful experience, and I want to thank them for making voting a pleasure and making me feel good. So, thank you so much. And then the second thing I wanted to talk about is that the, you know, I keep reading in the papers and feeling like I don't actually totally understand what the state is doing around affordable housing. And I think that that has the potential to have really great opportunity for our city to gain funding and implement strategies that could increase affordable housing in our community. So I wanted to suggest that the mayor and the council try to find opportunities, maybe at the council meetings, just having an update on that legislation and what it means for the city, or some other forum where the entire community can really become knowledgeable in a way that's relevant to them about what funds might be available and what might be able to be done, and how they can help, right? Either by advocating with their legislators, by helping the city, you know, you know, bringing volunteer resources to the city, if grants need to be written, whatever, so that we do not miss this chance to take advantage of what looks to be a significant amount of money to really address what may be the top priority issue of the members of this community.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Name an address for the record, please.
Richard Desadi, I live at 472 Walnut Street, and I'm here requesting that the council add to their agenda next month, at one of the meetings next month, a report on the solution to the problem of the landslide opposite 369 Walnut Street. On March 31st, it'll be the two-year anniversary of that landslide. The road is one lane, no pedestrian walkway. Thank goodness we have a fence up there that was put up in October, no one can fall over that cliff. But there's public safety concerns there. One, there's a gas line that goes under it. Engineering studies have been done. Our neighborhood would like to hear what the answers or what the engineers have said, and we'd like to know what the city's plans are. We'd also like to see traffic signs put up, telling, warning people, single lane ahead, yield, caution, pedestrians in the road, those types of things. So just ask that it get formally addressed by this body with those people that are involved reporting to you on what the conditions are, what the safety issues are, and what we can expect in trying to resolve the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak at open forum? Okay. Mayor's updates. Mayor, would you like to speak to us, please?
Sure, I can actually address Mr. Desadi's concern about Walnut Street. I did meet with the neighborhood back in October, I think it was, was that what, August 4th, on site. We have completed the engineering study, which is at about 95%. We have submitted a grant under the BRIC program, which is through MEMA, and we are waiting for the results. I am hoping that we will successfully be funded for the project, but until then, we are waiting, we are waiting. I look into those street signs because I thought those were taken care of. But at this point, we are waiting. I'm happy to have another neighborhood meeting. I thought Dale and you and I were going to get together. But I don't know that that happened, but I'm happy to have a neighborhood meeting with them again. We, it's taken us some time to engineer it through tie and bond and to come up with a funding opportunity. We worked with MEMA on what was the best route for this project, and their suggestion was through the BRIC program, which we have, we successfully made it through the notice of intent, the notice of interest, they thought our project was worth funding, so we've taken it to the second level. Unfortunately, it's just going to take more time. But I'm certainly happy to have a neighborhood meeting, invite Tim Desario to come, give you a brief synopsis of what the engineering plan is. Unfortunately, we're at the mercy of the grant application right now. But as soon as we get a decision, we will pursue forward under those grant conditions, or we will have to find another alternative. Thank you.
Mayor. One question, do we have an update on the Vets Memorial Bridge?
Yep, the Vets Memorial Bridge is being looked at by Mass DOT for a temporary fix. Again, we're waiting for the engineers to come back with a recommendation.
Thank you.
And Brown Street Bridge will be going out to bid very soon, we're waiting for the prevailing rates to come back. The specification itself has been edited and ready to go, so that will be packaged pretty soon, that will go out along with some Chapter 90 road projects. Hopefully by March 1st, which is Friday.
Thank you. Committee reports in minutes. Okay. Yes. Oh, yes, Counselor Shade.
Yes, thank you. At the last Idea Commission meeting, we have started discussing implementing new trainings for the elected officials. We are looking to host our first one in April. I will be sending out an email to all of the elected officials to let them know and to request potential dates. So we are looking to have our first workshop training session in April. Just an update, so expect that email, please, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, not minutes, sorry.
Counselor Concerns, Counselor Blackmer.
I want to remind everybody that next Tuesday is Super Tuesday. It's election day for the primary for president. Polls are open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And we all vote at St. Elizabeth's now, so it's pretty easy, there's parking. It's pretty easy to go in and vote, and as someone already mentioned, the early voting is going really well, so just want to remind everybody, don't forget to vote.
Thank you. Counselor Fitch.
Yes, a couple of community events are approaching. One is this Friday, and that's called First Fridays, it's the first Friday of every month. There's a lot of activity going on downtown North Adams. It's a collaborative of some different community organizations, including NBCC, the Chamber of Commerce, and of Commerce, and several others, as well as shop owners, gallery owners, and restaurateurs, producing fun activities, parties, and experiences for families and our visitors. So please check that out, that's between 5:00 p.m. Because of Bright Ideas now hosting an after dance party, it goes till about 11:00 p.m. And one other thing, too, North Adams Pride is producing its second annual Northern Lights Ball, that's Saturday, March 9th, and that's at the Elks Lodge, and that's from 8:00 p.m. until about midnight. And last year, we ended up selling out, so if people are interested, please get your ticket soon. And reminder, nobody will be turned away due to lack of funds at that event. Anybody can sign up and request a free ticket, and we will, no questions asked, deliver that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. At this point, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody, and clerk will be taking pictures, so if anybody wants to stay behind and have their picture taken for the...